Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the Cuyahoga County Council Work Session for Tuesday, August 28, 2012. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Calling to roll is Simon.
Here.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
President.
Mr. Brady.
President.
Mr. Jemanna.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Well? Mr. Jones.
Here.
Your Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Connelly.
Here.
All right, thank you. So we have a quorum present, and I'd like to call on Mr. Applebaum. I understand you have some extra money left in the fund, and I'm putting a requisition for a pair of shoes, which I had destroyed when I went on the tour last week. You didn't tell me it was going to be quite that muddy, but I'll survive.
As I recall, I did send an email warning people that they might get some mud on their shoes and their pants, but we will, you know, I had good shoes, so I didn't have a problem.
Since I'm a near relative of Imelda Marcos, I have quite a few pair of shoes. I'll survive, but thank you for your, looking forward to your presentation, and we'll give you the microphone.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm delighted to be here to give another project update, and it was great that so many of you did come on the tour, and I do apologize for the fact that there was a little mud, but I also think, as many of you commented to me later, you were surprised. We've talked about the project, you've seen the pictures, but to be there, to see it, just the scale, the scope, I think most of you were very pleasantly surprised by what you saw, and I will tell you, we've been doing dozens of tours, and we're getting the same reactions. I was just mentioning that after you folks viewed the site, we had a congressional delegation of staff that came through on Friday, and Senator, or, excuse me, Congressman Lou Stokes walked the site, did the same walk you did, from the Medical Mart down all the way from the south to the north, and we actually had to beg him to let us get a cart to take him back, because he was game, he wanted to just keep walking. So it was a great tour, and he really enjoyed the tour, so thank you for making it, and I'm glad you had the experience. So let me tell you what's going on with the project. This is the same screen we always start with, and the only reason I'm showing you the screen is to show you that after about eight months, we have one change. You know, everything is the same about the project, scope, budget, et cetera, but as you now know, because this announcement came from the county executive after our last session, we have a new substantial completion date for the Convention Center project. We've moved that date up from August 31 to July in order to accommodate the senior games. Here is just a little bit of information on that. The project is ahead of schedule, the new projected completion date for the Convention Center is July 1, 2012. It's going to allow us to accommodate the National Senior Games, which will be held from July 20 to August 1, 2013. This is just a tremendous event for Cleveland. There are, you know, tens of thousands of people who will come into town for this, and it's really, it's going to be just a great event. We're still looking to see if we can even do an earlier event, we're exploring that possibility as well. The deal to make that happen, this wasn't announced, obviously, there are savings and costs involved with doing this. The essential deal was Turner is getting $270,000 to accelerate the project. Seventy thousand of that is actually coming from Positively Cleveland, because they were originally going to tent Public Square. They're saving money by using the Convention Center, so part of that savings goes back to pay for this. The other $200,000 is actually contributed directly by MMPI. They have a contractual obligation to make eleven and a half million dollars of contributions to the project, and for tenant lease-up and other expenses, this $200,000, they're paying it out of their pocket, but it's counted toward part of their eleven and a half million dollar contribution. There's a few other pieces of the deal, it's actually, there's a lot of parts I don't have here. One interesting thing I thought I would tell you is, originally, we actually, the former administration wanted a 250-square-foot office in the Medical Mart to house someone from the county. We have determined that we really, there's really no need to have this office space in the Medical Mart or in the Convention Center, so we basically said, "Give it back," or "We'll give it back, you give us fair market value," which is an interesting conversation, by the way, but we will negotiate something on that. There are a series of other technical changes we've made to accommodate this, there's also some certain outstanding claims, some of which I'll tell you about, which have been resolved, but that's basically the deal, to move the date up. So we do have the date moved up into July, and we'll see just how far up we can move it and what else we can accommodate with our schedule. The rest of the construction update is this, the project is, continues to be within budget. At this point in time, the total developer cost, the total amount that's been paid to MMPI through July 31 is $286 million. This is of their total budget, which is $418 million. They are capped at 418.2. Everything above that of the 465 is our part of the budget, that's our property costs and other things. That includes $243.2 million of construction, which is in place, which actually goes through Turner Construction Company, including $23.5 million in July. The project is now 72 percent complete, so just as you think about how we edge toward getting this done, we're now 72 percent done, based on billings to date, work in place, and we continue to exceed our LEED Silver Certification, which is one of the important criterias of the project. To show you a little bit about what's going on in the project, and because some of you have walked through the job, you have a very good idea of this, you see there a picture of, this is what I see all the time looking down from Key Tower, that's the Medical Mart roof. That will be complete September 30. You know, right now, all the steel is done on the project, all the concrete's been poured on the project, you know, the foundations, obviously, were all complete, we're getting elements of the project completed, so the Medical Mart roof will be done by September 30. Many of you were able to come up on the third floor, on the bridge, and look out of the Medical Mart toward the mall, and you saw the scaffolding on the inside, and what you didn't see is the start of the window placement, so right now, the windows are being placed, the vertical window fins are going up right now, and the vertical class for the windows are now going in on the east face of the Medical Mart building. Here you see the Mall B. Now let me tell you something you're going to start to see. In three weeks, the sod will start to go in on Mall B. You already see the sod north of that Mall C. Right after the first frost, you'll start to see the trees being installed on the LAs on both sides, and the malls will be completed by December. By December, all the grass will be in, all the improvements will be in, lighting will be in, trees will be in, so we're really moving very, very quickly toward getting the surface done. This is another view where you see the mall, but you also now see the facade of Public Auditorium. The stone restoration that we are obligated to do is now complete on Public Auditorium. We're now in the cleaning phase, there's some miscellaneous work that has to be done, but very shortly, all the remediation work on Public Auditorium will be completed. Here you see the lift, the lakeside lift over the entrance, you all remember walking underneath it and looking up and seeing it. This will be the last area that is completed with respect to the styrofoam, and then the earth, and then the sod, but you just get a view of what's happening there in the last couple days. This is something you didn't see much of when we walked down. If you had gone all the way to the north end, and now you're looking at, you're in the Convention Center, you're in the Exhibition Hall, looking, you know, this is on the north, and this is the utilidor. This is a massive, this is the last really risky thing we're doing, so even though we completed everything on that floor, put the roof up, now we are digging into the bathtub. This is the utilidor where utilities are going to run, you know, before we finish bringing the floor up to grade and pouring concrete. That massive 30-inch pipe is there to basically hold everything together while we do this one excavation, so this is, there's a little bit of risk involved here, this is one that we still want to get through, but we're doing this as quickly as we can to get this utilidor done and get our utilities through that section. You may recall looking up and seeing the ceiling as we did our tour, I can tell you the ceiling in the Exhibit Hall is now fully installed, it's fully painted white, looks great, as you can, as you recall when we looked up and saw that. You now see this work going on, and these are so-called Cub boxes, or combined utility boxes, at various locations in the event floor and other places, this is where utilities come up, this is where your electrical comes up, your different electrical feeds come up, and other utilities, and so these are being installed right now, prior to the concrete pour on the Exhibit Hall floor. And finally, this is sort of the money shot, this is in the northeast corner, the third floor of the Medical Mart, looking out, and you can just see the great view, the great shot that we all saw from there, looking down on the sod, and this is just a vision of what it looks like right now. So you've all, many of you went through the tour, but this will just be a reminder of some of the things that you saw. To talk quickly about contracting and staffing, this month, we will hit, in August, we'll hit a peak manpower of, it's predicted, we had 574 people there last month, 619 the month before, we'll be, it's scheduled for 600, we'll probably have a little bit more. So we'll be over 600 people working every day in that project, and when we toured it, it was at the end of the day, so you didn't have as many people there. Earlier in the day, there's a lot more people moving around, so we're at peak manpower for the project right now. Our inclusion goals, we continue to be right at the same levels that we have been over our goals. Our SBE goal, which is 25 percent, we've been holding steady at 30.25 percent. There are 149 SBE contractors on this project, 54 of which have been hired by their respective prime contractors for the first time. That was an important goal of the project, that's going very well. County residency has actually hit a new high of 52 percent, we were at 50 and 51 percent. At this point in time, 52 percent of all labor on the project has been resident labor from the county. City residency is at our goal of 20 percent in terms of workforce participation. You can't see this very well right now, but this is a trade-by-trade analysis of 800,000 work hours on the project, and you can see every trade, what their contribution is. This has an additional column, which is minority participation, which actually shows, and female participation, so workforce, 21 percent of the total hours on the project have been minority work hours, 5 percent female, and there you see your 20 percent city and 52 percent county. So that's your workforce by trade contractor, and you can take a look at that at your leisure to see how that's all going. We have moved into a phase of the project, which is really, while we still are very focused on design and construction, we're also now very focused on operations. We're less than a year away from operating this thing, and we're working very, very hard with MMPI to make sure our county goals and county requirements are in place for operations. So what it means is we now have regular operations planning meetings. Every week, we have a weekly construction meeting, we have now combined with that a weekly operations report, and every three weeks, we focus on operations, along with a lot of other meetings and sessions to deal with operations. Dave O'Neil of Conventional Wisdom is assisting us in this effort, he's here today, going through operational meetings this afternoon, so this is really a big focus of ours right now to make sure that we have our operations plan in place. Part of that is implementation of a staffing plan. We have the right to approve of the staffing plan of MMPI, we produced last December, what we agreed upon as the staffing plan, we have been working with MMPI to make sure they are staffing up accordingly. We're looking at revisions, but right now, staffing is very critical in terms of their internal staff. We're in the process right now of reviewing RFPs. MMPI has developed RFPs for selection of vendors. There are about seven or eight RFPs right now for the various vendors who have to operate within the facility to make it work. Those are actually on our website, the county's website, there's a link so you can actually see, even though we're not procuring them, MMPI is, it's linked on our website. So the selection of vendors is at least gathering up proposals for RFPs, it's well underway right now for the operations phase. And then the next thing I want to talk about is, we're working on the development of a labor management plan. Now, there will be, at high points in this project, as many as 600 or more folks staffing the job. Some of these will be folks that are part of the staff that MMPI and our operations bring into the facility, some of them will come in from the shows themselves, but these are people who will be working in the building under contract to do various tasks, and like I say, it's over 600. One of the questions here is about the nature of that labor and maintaining labor peace, and I did want to ask our county executive to comment just for a second about the goal and philosophy that we've been working on as to who will be the staff in this building.
Just briefly, it's just my expectation, then we've expressed it to MMPI on a number of occasions, that it's going to be a unionized workforce that maintains and operates the facility on a day-to-day basis. We're having some discussions with local labor groups, AFL and the building trades and others, about how that would work, so, and they've had some of their own separate discussions, but I just wanted to, just like we've tried to make sure that that was the case on, to the extent that we were able to, once we got here, to make sure that that was the case on the construction side, we've expressed the same, I don't even want to call it a preference, I consider it not to be negotiable, that's my personal opinion, that that will be the nature of the workforce once it's fully operational. There hasn't been anything official that's been agreed to, but I can tell you that MMPI knows that that is our, they have been proceeding on the assumption that that's what it will be, and as soon as we have anything more specific about what shape that will take or what unions will, or what union associations will be involved, I'll, we'll inform council as soon as we have that information.
Thank you. And the issue is not going to be so much that it's going to be a union building, the issue is which jurisdiction, you know, you have different unions with different potential jurisdictions, so it's managing the process, because the goal is, number one, to have a union building, but also to have flexible work rules and to have a building which is user-friendly, so that when a show comes in, they perceive that they're going to be able to come in, and they're going to be able to use the building in a friendly fashion, bring their folks in, work with local labor, and that's the challenge, which we're working through in developing the labor management plan that accomplishes all this. And as I mentioned, there'll be a lot of folks working in this building, a lot of revenue generated in this building, so that's why that's so critical. We're also doing work on a series of other operational issues, including work on things like parking plans and other things, and you'll hear more about this as we move forward, but I just wanted you to know that we're working very hard with MMPI on all operational issues of the building. It's as much of a focus right now as completing the construction. You know, it's a three-fold idea, complete the design and construction, all designs complete, complete the construction, set up a workable operations plan, and then the business plan that brings the shows and events, and you need all three for this project to be successful, and all three are critical focus that we have right now. Some miscellaneous things that I'll talk about, number one, naming rights, which we've talked about for a while. What you see there on the right is the RFP, which was actually issued on Friday. So there is a request for proposal out for the naming rights consultant that's going to identify all naming rights opportunities, whether it's for the Medical Mart and Convention Center, whether it's for venues within the Medical Mart and Convention Center, whether it's for malls or elements of the malls. The issue date was 8/24, sealed proposals will be coming back on 9/13 for review and analysis and award of a consultant to work with us and the city to harvest naming rights, so that's in play right now. One issue, during our tour, I walked several of you up to the very north end of our project, and the reason I walked you there is I wanted you to see the view, and it's a neat view, looking to the left and the right, and then I wanted you to look straight ahead to encounter the Amtrak station, which I know serves a very important function, but which, from a visual perspective, is not the greatest thing to be visually confronted with on the project. I will tell you, we've had some preliminary discussions with the city. What we've learned about this Amtrak station is that it's on city-owned property, it is not Amtrak, it's not owned by the railroad, it's owned by the city, and there's a month-to-month lease for the Amtrak station. Now, you know, whether the station has ultimately moved is, by the way, it's supposed to be a temporary station. Whether it's ultimately moved is an interesting question, I think part of that depends on the port levy, because if there's a bridge that goes further to the east, there could be the idea of moving the Amtrak station to the east as well, but for now, we have the station there. We have determined, however, that there are some screening solutions that might be viable, where we could actually dress up the area in front, do some landscape screening of the station, actually work on the trees behind, so you could have more of a view of, you know, the Great Lakes Museum, Rock Hall, and maybe less of a view of the roadway back there. So at this point in time, we have engaged our landscape architect to come up with some what-if solutions. If we can find some good economical solutions, we'll engage with the city and see if we can work something out with the city, since some of the screening would actually have to be on their property with their coordination and cooperation. But the idea here is, this is a very important vista, this is what everyone will look at when they come into our great new hall, so we want to make sure that, you know, we spent the time and effort to put that wonderful window there, we want to make sure that what we look at is pleasing, and, because it's probably, you know, one of the most important views from the facility, so we're working on that right now. We've also, in the last month, resolved some outstanding claim issues that have been out there. One of them that I've told you about from time to time is the West Third to Entrance of the Facility driveway, the driveway that goes from West Third to the entrance of our facility. MMPI did make a claim for a $1.2 million increase to their budget, they believe that this was our responsibility. We took a different and opposite view, and we did settle the case, and the case was settled for zero budget increase, so it's a good resolution from our perspective. They're going to take that cost, and they've, I think they've been convinced that this is, in fact, their responsibility. So we ended that dispute, which had been going on for a long time. We also had a dispute with the city over utility expenses for the spring of 2011. When the project started, we had combined utilities with the Public Auditorium and Convention Center, we did have an obligation to reimburse the city for our share of the use of certain utilities. The city gave us a bill for $297,000, which we contested. We've been going back and forth on this since December, we did concede that we owed something on this, and we got to a resolution last week on the $297, we've agreed to pay, and we're settling this for what we think is a fair and reasonable payment of $125,000. So, and that will come from MMPI's budget, not from the county's budget. So while we resolve that as between the county and the city, it is the obligation ultimately of MMPI to take it out of their budget, so that is another issue which has been resolved. I will tell you, we had an issue on steel, which has been resolved, not going with right now, but there are no claims out there that are unresolved on the project right now. Everything that was a claim is resolved right now. Not to say we couldn't have other things that show up, but it's unusual to be at this stage in a project like this with no pending claims, and they've all been resolved in a fashion which is favorable, I think you'll see from the numbers, to the county here. Marketing update, and we don't have MMPI here today, but I do, we had our meeting with MMPI today, and I can tell you that everything is smooth and steady with respect to convention sales. When they reported convention sales in June, they had 26 confirmed conventions, and they told you they were booking at the rate of maybe one every two weeks or so. In fact, they've held steady, we now have 31 booked and confirmed conventions, some of these you've seen notices of in the paper or other places, and there are 37 proposals, firm, you know, proposals that are, serious proposals that are pending. So we have 31 booked, 37 in the pipeline, and we continue to churn out these opportunities. And I will tell you that what is happening right now that didn't happen before is these, is folks with potential events are coming in and touring the facility, and when they tour the facility, they see what you saw, and they see the back of the house that we talked about, you know, how well this facility is set up for all these back-of-house operations for support, they're impressed, and we're getting bookings. The lease activities in the Medical Mart, there are right now 63 active prospects, and I know that Jim Bennett took you through this and what he considered an active prospect last time. If all of them actually signed leases, it would account for 150,000 square foot of space. We only have 118,000 square feet of space, so we're not going to sign on with every one of the active prospects, including LOI holders, we're trying to vet through the list and make sure that we have the priorities that we want in that space, themed the way we want it. Right now, of the 63 active prospects, 30 of them involve leases that are either final or in process, so they've gone beyond from prospects to proposals to serious lease negotiations, with proposals going back and forth, and they're in various stages of getting leased up. So hopefully, at the next meeting, you'll have a more in-depth report on where we stand on the marketing update, but that is the quick marketing update, and with that, it's a quick presentation, but I'll take any questions. You did get to walk through it, so I know you're up to speed on what's going on there.
Is the item for the firm that's going to be doing the naming rights, is that already budgeted in?
The...
Yeah, that doesn't come back before council, right?
Well, actually, let me explain how the RFQ works, because the pricing of it comes in two different ways. One way that this could be, first of all, it could be priced on a pure commission basis. In other words, you go out, you find the proposal, you bring the party in who wants to name the facility, and your compensation comes out of, you know, it's a commission, comes out of the effort, so there's no net increase to any budget for naming rights. That's one of the pricing methods. The other method, the alternate method, is we will pay a, you know, some base fee with a commission on top of that, you know, and the question is, what would the base fee be? What would be the commission? Keep in mind, this effort is also shared with the city, so whatever we agree to do, the city is our partner in this. So the question is, is the city going to be more oriented to the commission proposal, where there's no upfront money, or is the city going to be more oriented to putting some upfront money and then taking, you know, with the commission on top of that?
So the companies will come back and say, "I can do this for commission only," or "I want X number of dollars upfront plus commission."
They've actually been asked to propose it both ways, they're actually required to propose it both ways, so once we see the proposals and we vet them, we'll come back to you with a recommendation, but at this point in time...
So is this something that's going to have to be voted on by council?
It actually depends on what the proposal is, because it depends on what the upfront money would be, actually, and then there's the question of whether it goes to the Controlling Board or Council, depending on the amount. So I'd have to actually think about what that amount of money is.
Okay.
But it may be under your threshold, it depends on how they propose it. So the answer is, I think we have to wait and see what the proposals are and how much of them we accept.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Madam President?
Mr. Miller.
Sure.
Madam President, Mr. Applebaum, when you said that there's 37 proposals pending for the convention, is that in addition to or inclusive of the 31 that have been booked?
In addition to, so you're looking at 68, 68 either booked or proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, I just have a question, we'll have a couple questions, but one on the naming rights, have we identified all the areas where naming rights are possible? Are there, are we looking at all of the rooms being named and potentially selling that? And then there's, is there an opportunity for the county to come back and say, "We would like this room named after such-and-such"?
How much you got? No, the answer to the question is as follows, we have named all of the opportunities by category, so there are four categories of naming rights that could be sold, and the four categories are naming the Convention Center or Medical Mart as a whole or as two separate parts, that's an opportu, and by the way, the reason it makes a difference is that where the money goes changes depending on what the opportunity is, so that's opportunity number one. Opportunity number two is to name discrete feature- Opportunity number two is to name discrete features within the Medical Mart or Convention Center. So it could be, it could be the ballroom, it could be a meeting room, it could be a sink, but I don't think anyone will go for that. But those opportunities would be there. Opportunity number three is to name the malls, you know, as a whole. And opportunity number four is to name discrete elements on the malls as the group plan commission wants to do, you know, whether it's a fountain or some other venue on top of the malls. Those are the four categories. What happens within those categories, it's really up to the naming rights consultant to analyze and present proposals and to harvest financial opportunities within those various categories.
Okay. How long are we looking to have people sign lease agreements for?
You mean what the possible duration of the lease is?
Correct.
That's a question that I'd rather have MMPI answer, because I know some of the terms, but I honestly don't know how far out they may be going on the lease terms. It can't be, I can tell you this, it can't be longer than 17 years, because that's the duration of the MMPI term. So you're not going to have a lease which is, to them, which is beyond their term. I can't tell you, I can't tell you within that exactly what, you know, how they have that structured specifically. I should be able to, but I can't, but I'll know that before the next time I appear before you.
Yeah, I have just a question. You made a statement that there was a decision made already about the labor for operations, it's already been made to go with, what operations were you talking about?
Within the building?
Yeah.
Oh, well, there's just all sorts of operations that take place, everything from cleanup, you know, custodial work, cleaning, the food service operation, you know, there's for setup and takedown of shows, you have electricians, you have stagehands. I mean, there is just a very broad spectrum of labor that occurs in the building once it operates. And there's two groups or two types of, two methods by which the labor is provided. Some of the labor, the shows themselves provide. So there are specialty shows that come in, and they'll have their own vendors and their own folks that want to come in, and of course, we will have rules within the facility. So, you know, they're going to be interested in what those rules are. They're going to want to know, you know, is it a union, you know, do we have to have union labor? If so, how does that work? You know, what are the exceptions? You know, can we have different kinds of pools in the building? So that's one type. And then, of course, there's going to be standing vendors who are there that do the work that may be unrelated to a show, but also a smaller show that doesn't bring its own vendors in. This is our standing workforce that comes in and supports the events. So there'll be two, there'll be standing contracts, and then there'll be the specific contracts that are brought in by a specific show.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schrein?
Yeah, in that same vein, I'm sure you're familiar with McCormick Center up in Chicago and some of the issues that, they actually had to take that down for special legislation because it became so difficult to find friendly workforce there. And major trade shows were ready to pull out of that. What are we going to do to make sure that, you used the word friendly about three times in reference, so my assumption is you're well aware of the issues that have taken place up in Chicago.
We are well aware of the issues in terms of, on the one hand, having a skilled union workforce, but on the other hand, having rules of engagement so that it is user-friendly, which is a balance. And obviously, nobody, you know, everybody, we want everyone on the same page to make sure it's a successful facility. Now, we have people with pretty good expertise in how to, you know, how to make that happen. But, you know, right now, I wouldn't want to say more about it, because right now, we're working through the process of making sure those rules are in place, of talking to the various unions and various parties and, you know, getting to a, you know, getting to agreement on that. So other than to say everyone's aware of the issue, everyone knows that you have to work this balance out, and we certainly want to have a very user-friendly facility. You do not want to lose a show because someone says, we'd love to come to Cleveland, but it's too difficult, you know, to put a show on there.
Yeah, that reputation gets out there really quickly in the show community, because they commit to it. And McCormick almost lost some of the largest shows in the world that come there because they drove them out, and they had to actually go down and have special legislation passed down in Springfield to bring labor back into the fold on this thing, because it was scary.
And that is why, almost a year before this thing opens, we're sitting here spending a lot of our time trying to make sure that these issues are properly addressed, and we are well aware of the issue, and it's something that, you know, you do have to address months in advance, and that's what we're working through right now. But it is an important issue.
And more curiosity, is the roof of the Medical Mart, is that useful, useful space for, I know that there's a lot of rooftop events on Chicago again, is that a space that can be used?
Please stay off the roof.
Oh, I guess the answer's no, okay.
No, it's not, it's not designed to be, well, you know, I shouldn't say that. I do not believe it's designed to be usable space. I don't think that's part of the function. Although I do recall that during the topping off ceremony, we did have a spectator, we did have an ironworker up there that was calling out to the group from the roof, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's, it's going to be usable space.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, thank you. Back briefly to the discussion about labor. We've all heard, you know, sort of the nightmare stories, whether they're true or not, the sort of urban myth stories about what can happen and things happening at the last minute that prevent people from being able to do what they need to do, and people basically having, being, you know, having, you know, not literally, being put into a corner, you know, where they, where the situation isn't what they expected anyway. My point is, is what's common, as you know, in Ohio and is, are project labor agreements, and they've been very successful. I know we're not talking about exactly the same thing, but it, those agreements that are signed by both sides have determined that there will not be strikes, that there will not be, these things will not happen. And it's the predictability that you want to build in, that there is no surprise here, and somebody's not going to jump out and say, well, we decided last night at a meeting that we think this. So, I mean, I would just recommend that something, something like a project labor agreement, you know, would be, would go a long way toward answering, dealing with this issue. And I think that, almost without exception, that the labor community in greater Cleveland is very cooperative and receptive of this kind of approach.
And to respond, while a project labor agreement per se is not something you do in an operations phase, the concept is that we prepare in advance, basically, the terms and conditions, the work rules, if you will, the understanding with labor as to how the building will operate, share that in advance with those unions who would have an interest of working in the building, do it collaboratively, come to agreement that this is a good set of workable roles and a good workable process, you know, get that sort of signed off in advance, so that the work rules are not simply, they're created through a collaborative approach. And I will tell you, that's what the meetings are right now. There are meetings with the various unions and the various contractors, you know, who have different unions that support them as to what those rules should be and how it should work. So that is the effort. You know, it's not going to be in the form of a PLA, but it will be in the form of a set of consensus work rules that are utilized on the project.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Applebaum, my question centers around CBAs, Community Benefit Agreements. Over the last few weeks, I've talked with representatives from nonprofits, chambers of commerce, and they've expressed concerns about community benefit agreements. And I know we don't have one on the Medical Mart project, but is there anything that you can share regarding them, what efforts, if any, that have been made in that regard?
On this project?
Yes.
Well, you know, we, first of all, we do CBAs on other projects quite often. Some of the largest projects that we've been involved in, like, I'll give you an example, the Amway Center in Orlando has what's called the Community Blueprint. It's essentially a CBA, it's a Community Benefits Agreement. Goes beyond, now, in Orlando, you're not so focused on union, but you're focused on other issues, including inclusion issues, community support issues. So community benefits agreements are, you know, they're important and interesting agreements to have. They can be very successful agreements. Those are agreements that you forge at the very outset of a project. There was not a CBA here, to my knowledge, there's really, there's not really been a true CBA on any public project. It's something that's worth exploring and talking about, but, and it's something that can be very successful. But I think that in order to get to the mentality to use a CBA, there really has to be more of a community dialogue, which is started, about what is a CBA, what are the elements of a CBA, what are the benefits of a CBA? And I think it's a very important dialogue, and I think it's a dialogue that probably, you know, this body ought to explore more, but it's not something that you implement partway through a project. So you have to do that right at the outset, right at the very beginning, because there's financial commitments that go with it. There's budget commitments that go with it from day one. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Applebaum. This is August, the end of August, so we'll look forward to hearing from you sometime, maybe the end of October-ish or so. And we'll get together with our staff and contact you and arrange a date.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any miscellaneous business for the work session? Has anyone signed in for a public comment?
No, Madam Chair.
Nothing other, for the good of the order, we can adjourn the work session. We have about seven minutes before we start our regular meeting. The work session...